Hi, everyone. This is Jackie Lucmon and welcome to a special edition of Live in Coffee: Current Events and Politics in Lucmon Nation, the most dangerous show on social media. Now, tonight is a special episode because I get to meet someone new. Well, no, I don't get to meet someone new. I get to introduce you to someone new. And I think this is very important that we have this conversation because in the midst of everything else that's going on in the world and in the country and certainly in our city here in Washington DC, we can't forget that elections are still happening. People are still running for public office. And that is incredibly important, especially as we're looking at how our elected officials are responding to this particular emergency, the COVID-19 outbreak, and we're reflecting on how our elected officials respond all the time to the needs of various groups of people, all of us in our cities. So I'm very happy to introduce you to Janay Lewis today. Janay is running for a city council seat here in Washington DC, and I'm gonna stop talking and let Janay introduce herself to you. Janay, tell everyone who you are here in Lucmon Nation.
Thank you, Jackie. Again, my name is Janay Lewis, and I am running for the at-large seat on the DC City Council as an independent. And I'm running for that seat because it is a citywide seat, and I have a citywide vision for the city that has been built collectively across all eight wards. And that vision is that DC is a city that is home, that people who want to make DC home or who already called DC home can live here, experience it as home, and can thrive.
So you're running for DC City Council at-large, and why are you running for this seat? Name the problems that you see, some of the top issues that you wanted to address that compelled you to run for this seat.
So it's not only issues that I wanted to address, but I think it's important to know that the platform that we're building through this campaign is actually a collective platform. So I obviously saw a lot of things that were upsetting me. I grew up in this area. I grew up in Prince George's County, and I went to high school in the city of Georgetown in the city. Both my parents worked in the city. My dad worked for Amtrak. My mom was a DC Public Schools teacher and taught and was a town superintendent and principal all over the city. So I remember DC in the 80s and 90s, spent a lot of time in DC in the 80s and 90s. And I went away to college, lived in a bunch of different states doing social justice work. And when I came back in 2010, I noticed a lot of differences from when I was growing up, a lot of changes in the city. And at first, you know, it was exciting, a lot of new restaurants, a lot of new businesses. But it was really clear quickly that not only were people being left out of that development, but people were being pushed out by that development. So that's what initially motivated me to look at running for public office and applying a lot of the relationships and skills that I've been built across the country with social justice work and the nonprofit sector to our local politics. But I didn't want it to just be my ideas and my vision and my thoughts. So I held visioning conversations in all eight wards of the city before I launched my campaign. And it was really important for me to call those visioning conversations because I talked to a lot of people who were frustrated like I was about gentrification, who were concerned about the inequitable development they were seeing, but they felt disempowered. And this is people, these are people who were middle class, highly educated, as well as people who were living in poverty. There were a lot of people who just felt like they didn't like what was happening, but they didn't know how to make the difference. And that said to me that we need to have a conversation about our vision for the city. So in having those conversations, there were three themes that came out that really informed my platform to get to your question. So the three big ideas or problems that people identified were around economic development, and our campaign wants to bring more equitable development to the city. Another big problem that people observed was the lack of affordable housing. And so our campaign wants to bring sustainable housing to the city. And the third big theme that we heard was around schools. And so our campaign wants to bring excellent schools back to the city.
You know, the whole gentrification piece is such an enormous part of the issues in this city. You know, I grew up in this city since I was six years old, and I remember yeah, definitely back in the day in the 80s and 90s when being a kid in DC was a lot of fun. And certain, you know, certain things absolutely changed, and we've talked about that many times on our show. But the policy responses to those issues were very, very problematic, especially for poor and working-class Black communities that were left in the city. And now those of us who are left are really trying to hold on to what little bit of, what little bit of DC makes DC the essence, so to speak, of what makes DC. And we're trying so hard not to have what's left of it gentrified out. So it's wonderful to hear a candidate understand that there is a culture and a vibe and certainly a soul of this city that people are trying to hold on to, that they're very afraid to lose. So, you know, I really appreciate that, and I hope our viewers appreciate that also. But I wanted to ask you, now that you've identified the issues, what are some of the solutions that your campaign would bring to address these issues?
Yeah. So let's take it one by one. So around equitable development, there are a lot of candidates across various races talking about the inequities of the development that's happening, unfairness of it, how it's left people out. There are first three prongs that I see that make up the problem of inequitable development. So one prong is exactly what you said, that a lot of the development the city has seen in terms of new businesses, improved infrastructure, has left out our neighborhoods. So I live in Ward 7. I live off of Pennsylvania Avenue, Ward 7 and 8, those neighborhoods, our neighborhoods that are east of the Anacostia River have been left out. And when I look around the neighborhoods, a lot of the businesses that were there when I was young, some of them are going away. There are some that are still left, but there aren't a lot of new businesses, whether they're small businesses or larger businesses, and that's frustrating to residents. Likewise, some of the newer businesses that are in Northwest or in Northeast are not sustainable. So that to me is the second part of the problem. Since I've been back in 2010, I have met small business owners. There was a sister on U Street who had a hair salon and hair care studio. She wasn't able to maintain the rent. The rent just didn't break into two fifty. We have legacy businesses like Sancofa Books that have to basically look for community support in order to pay rising taxes. Florida Avenue Grill is another business, historic business in DC that has suffered the same problem over the last five or six years. And so we have longstanding businesses that are pillars of the community, that give back to the community, that employ residents of the community, particularly all Black people of all color, that are not able to maintain, are not able to keep up with the rents, the rising rent costs, or with the rising tax costs. And the policy is not being developed in a way that supports them. And so the last prong in terms of the problem that I see is around the fact that people who've lived here for decades actually are not benefiting from the businesses that are coming because the price points are too high. So when you look at the jobs that are available, we just barely passed an increase in our minimum wage. But when you look at the jobs that are available, particularly for a DC native, people cannot afford the prices of groceries or the prices of retail that are coming into the city. So all of that makes up an economic landscape that is not sustainable, that is not equitable, is not fair, is not equitable to the city. So for our campaign, what we want to do is actually look at another model, which is a cooperative model. And this is not a new model for Washington DC. A lot of people may not realize that many of the pop art grocery stores that went to DC up until the late 70s were part of a network of cooperative grocery stores. So they were able to work together in order to provide high-quality groceries and other materials for communities. They inevitably were pushed out or shut down by the onset of larger grocery chains that we're familiar with now, like Safeway and Giant. So I shop at Safeway, I shop at Giant. I don't necessarily have anything against them. But when you look again, east of the Anacostia River, we have three grocery stores that serve 140,000 people in that neighborhood. And when I go to shop at Safeway on Alabama Avenue, oftentimes the produce is not high-quality. The lines are long because the store is understaffed. And this is not necessarily the fault of the manager or the employees who work there. It is based on a formula that corporations use and they measure profit and loss in stores and neighborhoods such that it matters. Again, if you look at Northwest, there are Whole Foods and yes, organic markets, which some people are able to afford, but folks who've been in those communities a long time may not be able to afford those price points. So there are folks organizing right now in Washington DC to build up a full-service cooperative grocery store. There are other cooperative businesses operating right now in DC. And cooperatives allow both the customers and the employees to own a portion of the business, which means that we are then gaining some of the profit. The profit is coming back to us. We can control the supply chain. We control where our vegetables come from. We can control where our products come from. And so we are able to make decisions about what we're receiving in these locations. So my platform definitely includes the city investing more and supporting the development of our cooperatives. And overall economic development requires anchor institutions. And I believe that our city can do more to serve as anchor institutions. An anchor institution is a big store, or a big hospital, or a big business that will anchor the economic activity in the community. Again, we have precedent for this. Mary Berry built the recenter at U Street, 14th Street, as an anchor institution to help bring economic development to that neighborhood. And so our city has used tax breaks to try to attract anchor institutions, but we've had a budget surplus of hundreds of millions of dollars for several years. And so we can rethink where we're putting city agencies, city property, and how it might serve as anchor institutions, particularly for neighborhoods that last time.
You know, that's a really, I think, great approach to building up businesses because that is one aspect of creating more equitable communities. The focus on cooperatives for grocery stores in particular, that is important because in the Black community, there's a rich farming tradition. And if you have a cooperative of Black-owned grocery stores, they are more likely to receive their produce and their meats from Black-owned farms, which does support the economic development of Black business and Black families all along the supply chain. And the businesses that you mentioned in particular that are struggling because of the increased rents in the areas where they exist, Sancofa Books, Florida Avenue Grill, I love those places. I'm there all the time. I love Florida Avenue Grill. I love Sancofa Books. Horace and Dicky's on H Street was just forced to close earlier this month because they could not afford the rent on H Street anymore. And Horace and Dicky's was a beloved seafood spot where you could get a two-piece fried fish dinner on Friday for a good price that was excellent food, and they were really wonderful people. So this is ensuring that businesses are able to thrive, to create more jobs and more stability in the community are important. But what about focused policies for individuals in communities to ensure more equitable communities for the residents of the community?
Yep. So another piece of our equitable development platform is looking at transportation. Right now, when we look at the allocation of transportation across the city, again, it is not equitable. It does not ensure that every resident, based on the circumstances of our neighborhood, have access to the economic drivers of the city. So the Mada Metro just put forward a proposal to cut several bus lines, many of them, again, east of the Anacostia River. We have less access to metro stations here east of the Anacostia River, and the parking has become more restrictive in the city. So my church is St. Augustine Church at 15th and U Street Northwest. And I was going to church about a month ago, and I realized that on Sunday, there is now a two-hour parking limit in the residential area.
Really?
Where, as you remember, on Sundays in DC, you can park for free.
Anywhere.
As long as you want.
Right.
That's right. And so this is a new development, and I was shocked. I was really, really shocked to see that. I actually remember the days you could park for on Saturdays, but I don't think we're going back to that.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen anymore. That was back in the day.
The reason why this is an equity issue, it's not about the parking, and I'm pretty wish I had a car, but it's not about the parking. It's about the fact that most of the retail is in the northwestern part of the city.
Right.
All of the doctors and hospitals are in the western part of the city, northwestern part of the city. And so if you don't live in northwest, but you need to access retail, a hospital, other services, or you just want to socialize really and have recreation, you have to go west. And if our transportation infrastructure does not take people who live east to the area where those resources are, and you can't park there without having to pay, that is an equity issue. That is literally disenfranchising people who live on the eastern part. And so our platform would apply that equity lens, specifically a racial equity lens and an economic equity lens, when we're looking at making decisions around transportation, how our resources for transportation are allocated, where does the transportation go, and thinking about both getting people in the short term to where the resources are, and then building up the economic health of neighborhoods that are lacking right now.
Yeah, I mean, that's really important. People sometimes don't think about how important public transportation is. And when you live in areas of the city like we do, because I live in Ward 8, so we are practically neighbors, you and I, actually. So, you know, I understand the struggles for people who live in this area who want to go to Northwest to go to the theater, or who want to, they say they want to go to National Harbor, to go to, you know, to go have a nice dinner on National Harbor. The buses run until 11 o'clock, and then if you're driving, you can't park anywhere downtown. You can't find anywhere to park. You have to park in a public parking garage that will cost you another $20 if you don't want to risk getting a ticket, parking on the street. And we're already broke over here, most of us. So we can't even afford to have a good time. And that should not be in a so-called civilized society. So why are you running for this seat? Why does it matter that you run with these policies? Why are your policies different from the policies of someone who's running as a Democrat? And in DC, I don't know if we even have to bother saying the policies of someone who's running as a Republican, because that almost, I mean, there's only been one Republican politician who anybody has ever respected in this city. And, you know, nobody, who else who's a Republican runs in this city? But why are your policies different? Why would, why do they matter in your candidacy running for this seat in this city?
Again, the at-large seat is a citywide seat. And I, when I moved back in 2010, I first rented an apartment in 14th Street, and then I purchased a house here on Ward 7. My mother, when I was young and elementary, my mother taught in Anacostia. So she taught at two schools that are gone now, Johnson Junior High and Southern Junior High School. And I remember spending a lot of time with her in Anacostia. We had a playhouse over there on R Street, not too far from where I live now, when my parents first moved to DC from the south. They lived in southeast. So this part of the city is really home for me in a lot of ways. And so I knew when I wanted to buy a house in DC, that I wanted to buy on this side of town. But I also recognize that it is important for someone to talk at a citywide level about policy, but have the lived experience of living in southeast or living east of Anacostia River, including northeast. And the reason why that's really important, to be able to have voice and authority at a citywide level, but represent this neighborhood is because oftentimes our communities are left out or are scapegoated. So a concrete example was the negotiation with Walmart. So there were supposed to be four Walmarts in DC. There are probably three Walmarts in DC. The fourth one was supposed to be in Ward 8, and the deal fell through for a variety of reasons. But it was left until last, and that was one of the reasons why the deal fell through, because it was built last. It was given left to be built last. So there are unique experiences to really east of the Anacostia River, but that are governed by citywide lens. And I think it's really important that I be on the team to bring both of those perspectives together. That said, my church is in Ward 1. You know, I used to live in Ward 3, my high school. I live in Ward 2 in Georgetown. And so I have relationships all over the city, and I have experiences and perspectives from all over the city, so I'm able to balance that as well with my neighborhood.
So let me ask you this last question. Now, we are in this, in the midst of this global pandemic. The world is responding to the spread of the virus COVID-19, also called coronavirus. The city has been holding daily press conferences on the status of the number of people infected and, you know, other details. And those press conferences have been led by the current mayor, Muriel Bowser. Now, there are a whole lot of questions I could ask about the city's response to this crisis. I'm not gonna put you on the spot for most of them right now. But I do want to ask, now, we're seeing the National Guard mobilized somewhere near here, and we don't know what their marching orders are, but we know they are ready to do whatever. Outside of the order or the edict from the mayor's office to close all nonessential businesses, there is still a large gap in the city's response and in most cities' responses to this virus in terms of testing, in terms of hospital vacancy, the number of beds that are, you know, that are needed, but also the infrastructure that is required to implement a citywide, for lack of a better word, quarantine or curfew. Under your leadership on the council, what would you advise the next administration to do to fill some of those gaps in the event of another kind of emergency like this?
So there are a few things. One, I think that our leadership has been lacking in transparency. So I did, I did get a message today from my council member, which I believe was the first email I've gotten from my council member. I've gotten messages from other folks, PNCs and other folks. But I did get a message today about drive-through sites that are now being implemented, just now being implemented, increased testing capability, and a few other things. Other states, other jurisdictions, and I'm gonna say other states because DC right now is advocating for us to be a transparent entity.
Right, right.
So other states have had drive-through testing for several weeks now. That information was highly transparent. That information was broadly shared, so broadly that I would get information about how to get tested in Minnesota. Right? I don't live in Minnesota. I don't know anything about Minnesota. So transparency is a big one. So I think that our local government needs to reassess our willingness to be transparent with residents in a crisis like this, and really trusting the people to respond appropriately. Another one, this crisis is both a health crisis and also an economic crisis. And so the city, I know, has delayed the requirement for filing taxes, paying taxes until later in the year, maybe June. But again, our city's operated with a budget surplus for the last several years in the past. And so we need to look at what we can do at the individual level to help families in this time. It's very clear that we don't have an emergency or disaster preparedness plan around food access. I have heard a lot of people who said that there are, you know, schools and other churches have food available for children or for the elderly, but not for adults. And so all of the adults who are now out of work unexpectedly, how are these folks supposed to eat? And it's clear that their children are able to eat, but they also need to be able to eat. Other basic supplies, today I dropped off fresh vegetables and some water for some seniors at Triangle Community, our senior center, and some residents inside of terrorists that have been helping with my campaign, that they said that's what they, that's what they needed. And so with people being immobile as well as not having access to some of these things, we need a better plan citywide to be able to provide people with basic needs in a situation like this. And then lastly, I think that we need to look at how we can be more aggressive around debt relief. So, you know, the federal government controls mortgages to a certain extent, and so there are limitations to what we can do. But again, the city has a surplus. So what about offering debt relief to people who have been unemployed? We're making a really clear plan to do that, regardless of whether that's student loan debt or mortgage debt. Also, really being aggressive with our utilities to not only suspend cutoffs, but also to suspend, I mean, what is, what is the profit margin for some of the most universal services and companies in our city? And is it possible for them to actually defer or completely erase the cost during this time? And if it's not possible for them to do that on their own, how can our city supplement that with some of the surplus that we have?
Yeah, and the city has a pretty large surplus. We're not talking about...
A trillion million dollars. I have, I have that number.
Yeah.
That's a lot. That's a lot.
Yeah, that's a lot that they could certainly use to help people. So, I mean, listen, this has been a wonderful conversation. I'm excited to meet you, to know you. I'm excited to introduce you to our audience. Now, everyone in Lucmon Nation knows that Lucmon Nation does not endorse candidates. We don't do that. But what we do is introduce our viewers to candidates so they can tell viewers what their platform is, what their policies are about, so our viewers can be informed to make the decisions they need to make. That's what we feel our role is. We don't like to tell people who they should vote for. We like to make sure people understand who they are voting for. And I think that's very important. So I'm gonna give you the last word. Janay, what else would you like to say to the viewers? You've got the last word.
Thank you. Well, one, thank you so much for having me. It's a pleasure to be my neighbor down the street. And I would love for everyone who's enjoying to please donate to my campaign. And the reason why it's important to donate to my campaign is because I'm using public financing. This is the first year that DC is doing this, and the city will match donations of DC residents five to one. But in order to qualify for that match, I need to have 250 unique donors. And I am almost there. So if everyone watching this tonight donated to my campaign, it probably will be on the edge. My website is janaylewisatlarge.com, which I believe you had on the flyer for this event tonight. And the field is so crowded because of public financing, and that is beautiful because that's how our democracy should work. So you can donate to me, you can donate to candidates of other races, you know, depending on which ward you live in. But by donating, even if it's five or $10, it helps to be closer to my goal and helps to support a thriving democracy that's really governed by the people. And I also encourage all of you to stay safe. Please do follow the advice of the CDC during this time and continue to support one another. Our city is stepping in a bit, but I see so many neighbors and friends helping one another. So think about how you can be generous and don't be afraid to ask for help from me.
Well, thank you so much, Janay Lewis. We wish you all the best. We're very, very excited to hear about your platform and your policies. We will include the link to your website in the video description so that people who are watching, if they're watching, so that people who are watching, if they're watching later, when they watch the replay, they can easily click on it and donate. And we're excited to see what happens. We're excited to see how your campaign will go. So thank you so much for joining me tonight, Janay.
Thank you for having me.
And thank you for watching. This is Jackie Lucmon with Live in Coffee Current Events and Politics in Lucmon Nation. You all stay safe and stay tuned for another episode on Sunday evening. Peace.